Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. Bill number 24-0478, rezoning 1214 to 1224 Holland Street, 21 to 23 South Carey Street, and 14th South Stockton Street. We will also hear Bill number 24-0495, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling units to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 509, 511, and 516 North Carrollton Avenue. We will also hear Bill number 24-0479, rezoning 901 West Mulberry Street, 317 to 329 North Schroeder Street, 222, it's 222 North Fremont Street, 811 West Saratoga Street, and 203 North Amity Street. And we will also hear Bill number 23-0204R, informational hearing on modular and tiny houses, benefits, and challenges. And take note, 230435, the zoning code modifications is canceled today, pending rescheduling. In attendance today, we have members of the committee: John Bullock of the Ninth District, Mark Conway of the Fourth District, Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, Antonio Glover, Thirteenth, Odette Ramos, Fourteenth, and Robert Stokes, Twelfth. And Representative of the Office of the President, we have Dexter Lockamy. And Representative from the Mayor's Office. No one at this time. And we also have Councilwoman Porter, that is sponsor of a bill today. Representative of the Tenth District. So let's begin. We'll start with Bill number 24-0478, rezoning 1214 to 1224 Holland Street, 21 to 23 South Carey Street, and 14th South Stockton Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 1214 to 1224 Holland Street, Block 0216, lots 053 to 058, 21 to 23 South Carey Street, and that's Block 0216, lots 047 to 048, and 14th South Stockton Street, which is Block 0216, Lot 074, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on January 8, 2024, and the bill was sponsored by Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Bullock, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. The bill that you are just about to hear, again, is one that is promoting development from a local, small minority developer, and it has gotten support from various community association members, as well as the full body. Similar to the other two bills, you'll also be hearing these have also gotten support from members of the community in a date back, as the Chair said, from both January and February of this year. So again, I'd appreciate a favorable hearing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Now we'll hear agency reports, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We approve the report, the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Department of Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
And good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Eric Tiso, Baltimore City Department of Planning. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of February 8, where they recommended adoption with one amendment, which is to add a property in for 1226 Holland Street. And the purpose of that is to allow the entirety of the redevelopment to be included in the rezoning together. It was just missing that one property.
Thank you. BMZA?
BMZA defers to planning.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. David Garza for the BDC. We stand by our report, favorable?
Thank you. Transportation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz with DOT. We sent our bill report of no objection.
Thank you. And we also have Tyler Chanelle from Government Relations that has joined us from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do committee members have any comments? I mean, oh, I'm sorry. Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas age from the Parking Authority. We stand by our bill report, which is favorable.
Thank you. Committee members, any comments on this bill? Okay, we're checking for in-person testimony. And that's Caroline Hecker. You have some comments? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin, Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. Unfortunately, my client has a family emergency and wasn't able to participate in person this morning. One of his colleagues, Kathy Christian, is available remotely if we need her. I think she signed in electronically. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee may have about the bill. If you'd like me to walk through the findings of fact, I'm happy to do that. We had submitted a memo, which should be in your record that goes through them in writing. I do want to make the point that we do support the proposed amendment, that the additional property should be added, and it was properly posted, and the notices were given to include that additional property.
Could you briefly just go over the findings?
Absolutely. So, you know, as the committee knows, the City Council has the authority to rezone a property upon a finding of a change in the character of the community or a mistake in the underlying zoning. This is a case of mistake. This property, this group of properties, were zoned B23 under the underlying zoning, or the, excuse me, the prior zoning, prior to Transform Baltimore. It had a sort of medium-scale commercial zoning designation that would have allowed a fair amount of density. The Southwest Partnership Vision Plan was adopted in the spring of 2015 while the Transform Baltimore process was underway, and yet does not seem to have been considered by the City Council when the City Council adopted the prior, the new rezoning to the R8 zoning district. It looks like what happened is that the City Council looked at the typology of the structures that were in place, which were largely row houses, and said, "Oh, this looks like it should be R8 instead of B23", without considering the Southwest Partnership Vision Plan that had been adopted during that process and which recommended the proposed commercial zoning to keep the, to allow some small neighborhood-scale commercial zoning and some additional density beyond what would have been permitted in the R8 zoning district. The Council, as you know, is required to consider a number of factors when reviewing a rezoning bill, including population change. The Census tract here has seen a general increase in population of a couple thousand people over the last several years. It is continuing to grow in the redevelopment of this property. Four additional dwelling units, which is what's proposed, will continue to further the development of the area and encourage the area's continued growth. The availability of public facilities. The area is well-served by public services. It will remain so for the foreseeable future. Present and future transportation patterns. The property is located just a couple blocks south of Baltimore Street, one block north of Lombard Street. The major east-west thoroughfares across town. It is well-served by, you know, transportation access. It's not, the proposed rezoning is not expected to negatively impact future transportation patterns. And the existing street grid is well-equipped to accommodate additional residents. It is compatible with the existing and proposed development for the area. There's another multifamily building going up a few blocks away in the 1300 block of West Baltimore Street. This is consistent with the growth that we've seen in that part of town. The recommendations of the Planning Commission and the BMZA, the BMZA is deferring to planning. The Planning Commission is recommending approval with the amendment that we've discussed. And the proposed amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan by creating additional residential units available to serve the city's housing needs. In addition, the city is required to consider a couple of additional standards, the existing uses of the property within the general area in question. This is largely, as I said, these were, you know, former rowhouse lots. There's a garage on the corner. It's all, you know, a couple blocks away from the Hollands Market Commercial Corridor. This is all, you know, consistent with the proposed C1 designation. This is going to be a multifamily building with first-floor commercial uses. And so it really is, you know, it's also consistent with the area around the property in question, which is, you know, it is adjacent to already C1 and C2 properties. The property is suitable for the proposed rezoning. As I said, the R8 zoning would prohibit the proposed development, and what is proposed is what was recommended by the Southwest Partnership's master plan. And again, the trend of development in the property, in the general area of the property, you know, again, shows this increase in development in the area, and it is demonstrated by the other multifamily building that's underway in the 1300 block of West Baltimore Street. There, I think that hits all of the factors that the Council is required to consider. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Caroline? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no in-person testimony for this bill, and we're checking now. We're checking now online. Beth, are you online for this bill? Beth? Okay. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable? So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. The move, not the bill. This is for the amendments. Okay? And this is by Glover, and then second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes? Bullock? Is a yes. Conway? Is a yes. Dorsey? Yes. Glover? Yes. Ramos? Yes. And Stokes? Yes. This, is there a motion to move the bill favorable? So moved by Glover, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes? Bullock? Is a yes. Conway? Is a yes. Dorsey? Yes. Glover? Yes. Ramos? Yes. And Stokes? Yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear Bill number 24-0495, rezoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling units to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 509, 511, and 516 North Carrollton Avenue for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of certain single-family dwelling units to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the properties known as 509 North Carrollton Avenue, Block 0127, Lot 018, and 511 North Carrollton Avenue, which is Block 0127, Lot 019, and 516 North Carrollton Avenue, which is Block 0126, Lot 008, as outlined in red in the accompanying plat, granting variances from off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on February 26, 2024, and the sponsor, again, Councilmember Bullock. And we're going to go, do you have any added comments? Okay, we're going to move to agency reports and start with the City Solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department, and we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. BMZA?
BMZA defers to planning.
Thank you. Department of Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Planning?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their public meeting of June 20, where they recommended approval. Each of these three buildings will meet all the bulk requirements for two units in the R8 residential zone. The only thing that they can't do is provide parking, since all three of the lots are landlocked. There's no physical way for them to provide parking, which is why that variance is included in the bill, but the Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Thank you. Transportation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz with DOT. We have no objection.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Tyler Chanelle, Mayor's Office. The Fire Department stands by their bill report.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Madam Chair, Baltimore Development stands by its report.
And the Parking Authority, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Do committee members have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Checking for in-person testimony? Okay. No in-person testimony on this bill? Is that correct? Oh, we do have a hand raised. Come on up. You probably didn't check off testify, but that's okay. State your name. Yes. Press that button on the right.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ayla Harris. I'm with Parity. My testimony will be brief. I will not hold you long. So my name is Ayla Harris. I'm a director with Parity Homes. Parity is a 501(c)(3) organization founded on the principles of development without displacement and the creation of affordable housing. I want to say thank you to the Chair, as well as all of the departments for your favorable reports. With the rezoning of these properties to duplexes, our homeowners are required to occupy the home. There will also be a cap on how much rent they can charge, which speaks to our mission of affordability. So we're coming in, we're building houses, but also ensuring that they're affordable. And then last but not least, we build our homes according to the CHAP standard, which ultimately increases affordability as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And there was someone that was over here first, yes?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nika Namdi. I'm the founder and chief operating officer of Fight Blight B Moore, and I am here in support of Bill 24-0495. We support the conversion to the duplexes for Parity home buyers, as it will both remove blight and add affordable homeownership units in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. And you had your hand raised as well. Come, state your name, and... This is on this particular bill?
There's no papers. There's no papers.
We grabbed them.
Just simply, my name is Shiel Seltzer. I live in the neighborhood of Liberty Square in Baltimore City, an actual resident and homeowner, and the whole issue of quote, middle neighborhoods. In order, this is for everything, except for the tiny houses separate. You keep allowing buildings, houses, to be split up, and they never go back to single-family houses. They never, never, never. And I had spent three years trying to find a house, to buy a house, from 600 square feet to 3,000. And most of them were split up or had some other reason to not sell to me. And so, so you got to stop splitting up these houses, allowing them to be, I mean, there's like 74% of my neighborhood is rental. You got to stop doing this.
Thank you. And now we're checking for, is there any more in-person? Moving on? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The podium's in the way. State your name.
My name's Paulette Carroll. I'm the president of Towns of the Terrace. I've been living there for 14 years, and I've been a part of the charrettes, of building the POHomes, rebuilding the POHomes. And the problem that we had with it is that they want to put up five apartments, buildings. We didn't ask for that. I did over 800 hours with meetings, doing charrettes with them and everything. And then for them to come back this year and throw a plan in our face that the community knows nothing about. We didn't ask for all those tall buildings. We just got rid of tall apartment buildings. That was in Lexington Terrace. We do not need five big apartment buildings. What we do need is a community room. I need an office. The kids don't have nowhere to go. My people that live in my homes now are being targeted to move out of their house and everything. So I think that there needs to be another overlook over this, because we didn't ask for five apartment buildings.
So this testimony is particularly for Carrollton Avenue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So when we, we'll get you back. Sorry to interrupt that right there. Just checking for online, and there is none. Is there a motion to move this bill favorable?
So moved?
So moved by Bullock, second by Middleton. Chair Middleton, is a yes? Bullock? Yes. Is a yes? Conway? Is a yes? Dorsey? Is a yes? Glover? Is a yes? Ramos? Is there a yes? And Stokes? Is a yes? Okay, the next committee, next the committee will hear Bill number 24-0497, which is the rezoning of 901 West Mulberry Street, 317 to 321 North Schroeder Street, 222 North Fremont Avenue, 811 West Saratoga Street, and 203 North Amity Street. And again, this is for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property, for those properties I just mentioned. And as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the R8 zoning district to the R9 zoning district and providing for a special effective date. And now we're going to, well, this bill was introduced also on January 8, 2024, by Councilmember Bullock. And we'll now hear from the agencies, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office again.
Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department, we approve for form and legal sufficiency.
So just questioning what I mentioned. I had mentioned that this was Bill 24-049, I mean, 79. I said 97? Okay. Just to correct, this is Bill number 24-0479, and the City Solicitor's Office just approved for form and sufficiency. Now the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon again. This bill is reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of February 22, where they recommend that you adopt the findings and approve the rezoning from R8 to R9. In short, this is done in order to support the Transform POH program, which is the Hoodback Choice Neighborhoods Project, replace POHomes. The additional density that will be conferred by the R9 on the order of, I believe it's 570 some units, I can't find it quickly in my notes, but a large number of units. That additional density is needed in order to meet the funding requirements for that redevelopment. And with that, the Planning Commission does recommend to approve.
Thank you. Housing Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Favorable, and the BMZA?
Again, we defer to planning.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Madam Chair, we stand by our report, favorable?
Thank you for the favorable report. Transportation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz, DOT. We have no objection.
No objection, and the Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from committee members? Hearing none. We're checking for in-person testimony for this bill. And again, it's Bill number 24-0479. And we do have a couple people here. Paulette Carroll. There you go. Sorry.
And I apologize for earlier.
Oh, that is quite all right.
I'm a little nervous here.
You can pick up where you left off.
Because there's just a lot going on in my community, and we're not being heard living in the Towns of the Terrace, you know?
Thank you for coming to represent.
Yes. So my homes, the Towns of the Terrace homes are right across from Mulberry Street, which is, Bullock is my councilman too, in Arcangelo. So we was fighting for the houses to look just like ours. We didn't want apartment buildings. I did over 800 hours, and several other people in the community did. And for housing to come back with a whole different plan, I think this plan need to be shut down. I think the zoning need to be shut down. How is it possible all these apartments going to come into this little community where we have numerous parking problems? You know, the people that are living in the Towns of the Terrace never did had a chance for hope six, for them to grow, to be able to be homeowners. You know, they studied putting, you know, the young ladies out. The water bills are extremely high, still over $100,000 per unit. That is despicable, and no one is paying us any mind, even down to the councilman. We need a lot of help coming into this community. Housing to come in and just want to put up five other apartment buildings? I mean, that's, that's going to be a mess. Our children are already out of control. We don't have a community room. They have nowhere to go. We can't even get HABC to make their wrong doing right for HOPE 6. It's a lot of work needs to be done during HOPE 6, with they promised a lot of things, and they didn't ever do it. And it's written in the bylaws, and no one seems to follow the bylaws. And it's written in the bylaws and no one seems to follow the bylaws. I just cannot believe how no one is following the bylaws in, in their own communities or housing even sign their own signature on some of the things. So, you know, I see the hand me down going back and forth. I see the money being pushed to another community. The terrorists supposed to have their houses renovated in twenty nineteen. I've been packed up for five years. I just started unpacking because I need to feel like my house is a home now. Study waiting and saying, oh, this house gonna get done. Well, nothing is being done, you know? And we don't want apartment buildings, you know? We agreed velocity, units and, and his home building, that's what we wanted, that's what we asked for. But for housing to come in and wanna rebuild five apartment buildings? I mean, it's, it's gonna look crazy because our area is a resident, homeowners and rental areas. And kids doesn't do well in apartment and we have proven that years, twenty five years ago, when was the Lexington Terrace apartment? So you all know what happened, you know, to the lot of your family members, mine's and a whole lot of other people. So we don't wanna see that again, you know? We want to see.
Kind of wrap up with the final statement.
Right. We want people to, to be able to grow, to take steps to be able to be a local homeowner.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our Lisa Anderson, I know you didn't sign up to testify, but if you wanna comment, you represent HABC.
Good afternoon, council people. How y'all doing? Wasn't expecting to testify.
It's okay.
Ms. Carroll is, is very familiar with HABC, we with her as well. As far as some of the statements that she made, I wasn't here in twenty nineteen. The towns of the terraces is slated to be one of the rental assistance demonstration projects that we're gonna, HABC is trying with everything that we have to close on. Unfortunately, we need money from private, outside private financiers to do the rad closing for towns of the terraces and it's been delayed as other projects have been delayed. As far as this project, this is a part of the transform PO project and we're coming before this committee requesting this zoning change so that we'll be able to move forward with the redevelopment of PO homes. We begun the relocation of our residents at PO homes. There are two hundred and eighty eight units at PO homes and we relocated a hundred and eighty four of those residents. There are only a hundred and four left to relocate and once those residents are relocated, we gonna demolish PO homes, go into, to the federal government for a choice grant that we can do what at PO homes, what we've done at Perkins Homes. Ms. Carroll may mention that she's not interested in apartment buildings. These will not be high rises. They will be no more than five stories high, similar to what we're doing at the Perkins and Somerset, former Somerset and Perkins home sites. And the residents are there at Somerset. We're actually leasing at Perkins right now. And we need to have additional housing for the city of Baltimore. This is how it's done. Unfortunately, everybody can't be pleased, but Ms. Carroll was a part of the process and her and her neighbors, they were a part of the process because they were adjacent to PO homes. Our PO homes residence was a part of the process. Unfortunately, you can't please everybody. But moving forward, we have to do what's best for the city of Baltimore and our residents at PO homes and this is what we need in order to move this project forward.
Thank you for that added information. And Caroline Hacker, did you wanna add anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Caroline Hacker Rosenberg Martin Greenberg on behalf of the applicant. Anderson covered a lot of what I was gonna say, but I do wanna go through the findings of fact that the, the council is required to consider in connection with the rezoning. This was, as, as Mr. Tiso indicated, a multi-year effort to create a transformation plan for this neighborhood. Between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, there were eight steering committee meetings, nine PO home tenant council meetings, four PO home residence meetings, eight neighborhood task force meetings, three housing task force meetings, five people task force meetings, and seven other community and town hall meetings. This has been an, there's been an extensive amount of community outreach between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty to get the transformation plan in place. And this is now the culmination of the recommendations of the plan is this proposed rezoning, which is going to allow a one-for-one replacement of the subsidized units. It's two hundred and eighty eight subsidized units plus an additional two hundred and ninety affordable and market rate units to create a mixed income neighborhood here. The buildings are not high rises. They are five stories. It's really three residential stories over parking and commercial. So it's really not on the scale of the Lexington Towers or, or we know what we think of as high-rise apartments. This is based on a change in character of the neighborhood, this, this rezoning as the, the name transformation plan indicates. I mean, there is a, there has been a significant change in the neighborhood as demonstrated by the significant population decrease that this area has seen over the last seven, several years. Holland's Market Neighborhood has seen a seven percent population decrease. Franklin Square has seen a twenty percent decrease. Union Square has seen a fifteen percent decrease and Berry Circle has seen a thirty third, thirty-three percent decrease. So we've seen significant population change. However, the area is well-served by public utilities and services and is expected to remain so for the foreseeable future. And it has plenty of roadway infrastructure to accommodate additional, the additional vehicles that the additional residents will bring. And we're excited about the proposed development and having some additional density will, will absolutely help in this neighborhood. There's certainly plenty of public facilities that are available to support it. It is compatible with the lots to the north of the site that's proposed, which are already zoned R nine. So this is consistent with what is already in the area. The R nine district is specifically intended for predominantly mid-rise housing types, which is what we're proposing, these five-story buildings. Planning Commission is recommending approval. The Board of Zoning Appeals is deferring to the Planning Commission. The proposed zoning change is consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan by expanding housing choices for all residents. Again, this is, this includes not only market rate housing, but also affordable housing and subsidized housing. So it's really all, the full spectrum of housing types within the city here. With regard to existing uses of the, the property within the general area, you know, there is existing multifamily residential, there are commercial amenities in, in the area, and there are single-family historic row houses. So, you know, this is, this is consistent, this type of density is consistent with the, the mix of what is already existing. As I mentioned, there is R nine adjacent to this property, these properties already. And this, you know, this area is earmarked to be redeveloped for mixed income housing as part of the transformation plan. So this is entirely consistent with the, the proposed zoning district. The trend of development in the area is to create new housing opportunities for residents who are there, you know, replacing the subsidized housing, creating new housing opportunities, both at market rate and affordable levels. So for all of those reasons, we hope that the, the city council will support the proposed rezoning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for those detailed finding of facts. Any questions? Yes, there is a question. Councilman Glover.
Just for clarification, so I, I heard a mention earlier about Lexington Terrace. He said PO homes. What is, what do, what do we focusing on? PO homes or Lexington?
I think Ms. Carroll had used Lexington Terrace as an example. This is about PO homes.
Okay. So do you reside in Lexington Terrace or do you reside in PO homes?
I think the towns of the terraces is where she lives.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's three names on here, but you didn't check off to testify. Hold, hold one second. The people that signed up that I didn't see you wanted to testify, do you wanna testify? Okay, just checking. Say your name.
Shil South Side Liberty Square. I invite you to come to the west side of Jewett Hill Park and see what integrative living with, with different kinds of townhouses, different shapes, different sizes, along with single-family houses in, in Liberty Square, Parkview, Arcon Trolley Terrace. That is what integrated living is. And it was when people that were of the Jewish faith lived there and they wanted everyone to be able to live there, whether they could afford a house or need to rent. There's only about, the highest is, is four, four levels. And that's where it needs to be. But you're creating shadows and overdevelopment lacks the ability of turning Baltimore City of what it must become, which is probably the first time you've ever heard this, sponge city. A sponge city must be permeable. And yes, we need to provide one million sixty thousand for the future for people to live here, but high skyscrapers is not the way to go and five is too high.
Thank you. Now we're checking for online. Sonia Eddy, did you wanna testify on bill twenty four oh four seven nine? Ms. Eddy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good afternoon, council. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I had several things that I wanted to address concerning this bill. One thing is I heard, I was a part of this steering committee and the president of the Popleton Community Association. I also wanna say that I was three generations to Popleton, so you know the history of the community. And one of the things that we had, we had the Lexington Terrace high-rise project. And with the city demolishing those properties and bringing the new towns of the terraces, which consists of single-family homeownership and affordable rentals. The same thing they did with Murphy Homes across from us at Heritage Crossing. And again, with Hope Six, what they did over in Little Italy with flag projects. Everything that was built was single-family dwellings, rather in the form of a homeownership opportunity or affordable rental opportunity. So for us in Popleton, using Perkins as an example, even though they are not considered high-rises, that they relocated the Perkins residents to. They are, for us, black community, y'all are continually creating density of low income in your creative projects for us. They can be considered modern, luxury, you know, apartments in other neighborhoods. But for us, when you have a high influx of these units and know they're not high, it's five stories are high for us. But when you have fifty, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five units in one location, so now they're spreading across, instead of going vertical, you're going horizontal. And so you're still putting families of young mothers inside of an apartment building. This does not give them privacy, does not give them access to backyards, gives a space to run and play and be children. So for us, again, you have, you are then stuck in elevators and stairwells and parking lots. For us, this is a project. And we see this as Baltimore going backwards with this new, this new grant that they using first for Perkins. This grant looks like it's providing a way backwards versus what Hope Six brought us to be able to move forward. Now you're again just putting people inside of these. And then being a part of that committee, that, that steering committee, we did not vote, we were totally against apartment units. This is something that they brought to us saying that this is a qualification, is to be having to do vertical. We even went and looked for that new property that they're talking about building on West on, West Mulberry Street, where the HABC bought the, what was it? The, the church, the Jehovah's Witness Building. The community, we went out and we found these different locations because we did not wanna go vertical. So we found that lane that we went out and bought. And instead of providing the opportunity that we're asking for, they looking at it as if we're taking more opportunity and putting these high-rise buildings and telling us, oh, nothing is actually strong. We just need to put this forth to get the grant and that we can always come back, you know, to make modifications. This is not something that we signed off on. They use COVID, haven't had in-person meetings with us. And every time we have a meeting, it's the same old same old. They should have not changed that housing plan that they presented to us post-COVID. Nothing has changed, but they're trying to get us to sign off on it. And we have been in total disagreement.
Ms. Eddy, your, your point is noted. Could you please make a final statement so we can get the next person?
Okay, so my statement is, is that we do not support the rezoning to have PO homes to be able to go vertical in Popleton.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Checking for the next person. Okay, that is it online. Is there a motion to move this bill favorable? So moved by Councilman Dorsey. There's second. Second by Glover. Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock had to step away. He'll be back. Conway? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna first thank the folks from the community that came out today. You know, I know it takes a lot to come out here to advocate for your community on an issue like this. I'm painfully aware of how much time that takes and how much effort it takes to organize. And so I really wanna appreciate the folks who are here in person and folks who have testified virtually. With issues like this, we are trying to create more affordable housing across the city and the only way you can do that is by making more units. I appreciate that there are legitimate concerns about debt density and legitimate concerns about other things that may come as a matter of this project. And I think that's something, you know, we as a city should continue to think about and mitigate as much as possible those downsides. That said, I'm gonna vote for this and favor it. It's gonna be a yes, in part because I know we have a lot of challenges that we're trying to resolve here. And despite some of these downsides that we're hearing from the, from the folks who live in the neighborhood, I, I know the blight, the lack of affordable housing and some of the other issues that we're seeing across the city is only really gonna be addressed by things like this. Now, I think we can probably do things to address some of those concerns. And so I just wanna say I appreciate you guys for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure the committee agrees. Dorsey? Is a yes. Glover? Is a yes. Ramos? Is a yes. Stokes?
Madam Chair, may I explain it? I just wanna mention, I know they talked about Perkins. Have you ever, have you ever seen the condition that people Perkins lived in before we developed Perkins? Five years, we had meetings, five. But guess what? We did the first ribbon cutting, the first tenant who lived there was the first one to move back. What we doing is to make sure the people that live in those in Perkins, I'll use that word, had an opportunity to live in a world-class neighborhood near Harbor East and Little Italy. So I vote yes. It needs to be, we need that. We have to have a mixture of homeownership and some multifamily units. So I vote yes.
Thank you for your comments. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting and the next, next the committee will hear bill number twenty-three dash oh two oh four R. And that's the informational hearing, modular and tiny houses benefits and challenge for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Planning, the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, the Department of Transportation, Department of Public Works, and other relevant stakeholders to discuss the benefits of increasing modular and tiny housing in Baltimore City and the, also the common challenges that arise when a homeowner is constructing a modular or tiny house. And finally, how city agencies can streamline the process to better facilitate construction of modular and tiny houses in Baltimore City. This bill was introduced on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. This bill is sponsored by Councilmember Porter. That took some time and did some extensive work. And so that's why we're finally here today. So we'll now hear some comments from the sponsor of the bill, Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. In November of last year, twenty twenty-three, my office contacted and reached out to the Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the feasibility of tiny.
Oh, I thought that wasn't the one. Okay. It's on? Hold, hold one second. There we go.
All right, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So good afternoon, everyone. As I mentioned before, November of last year, my office contacted DHCD regarding the feasibility of tiny and modular homes within the city of Baltimore. I was met with, I was met with many of the challenges from the developers and some of the people, some of the advocates that are working in this space, from not only the conversation, but also some of the challenges as it relates to the permitting issues, the regulations from the housing and community development. This is an opportunity for us to check in. I shared at that particular meeting that I would follow up a year from now, given that we have a permit and we have a permit working group from the CAO's office. We have various other housing and community development working groups that should include tiny and modular homes within the city of Baltimore. As we're experiencing during today's hearings, we are experiencing a housing crisis and particularly a housing affordability crisis and just a feasibility crisis in general as it relates to our housing options in the city of Baltimore. As we saw, as we've seen in other states such as Pennsylvania, Oregon, and Atlanta and even to housing developments here in the city of Baltimore, one in Oliver and Councilman Stokes District from Lakita, from Smallton, from Smallton. We know, and we have a lot of data that surrounds the feasibility and the accessibility and the affordability of tiny and modular homes. This is something that I know that many of my colleagues are excited about as it relates to increasing the housing options here in Baltimore City. And I just wanna make sure that we have some sort of conversation with the move and the direction of our nation as it relates to tiny and modular homes. I wanna really just thank Brendan from Trident Builders and Randy from Metallic for, for really working with my office over the course of this year, really educating us on what the nation is doing, what other cities and what other states are doing as it relates to tiny and modular homes. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And now we're going to hear from agency reports and we'll start with City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary, ruling on behalf of the Law Department, we approve this resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Um, planning.
Good afternoon again. Uh, we're happy to be part of this discussion. Um, of course, any changes to building fire related codes will have to defer to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, we already are looking at making necessary changes to our design manual and other development guidance, uh, documents. I've been severely short-staffed for quite a while. I'm down three positions. The land use half of my division is me. Uh, hopefully, we will have three new staffers by the end of this month and we can start getting back to, uh, doing that. So we're happy to look into, uh, various options, uh, in collaboration with other agencies.
Thank you. Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Redd, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA.
BMZA again defers to planning.
Thank you. Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz with DOT, we support this initiative.
Thank you. Um, public works.
Good afternoon, Madam, Madam Chair. Um, we have, uh, no position to the passage of this, uh, bill.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank Councilwoman Porter for kind of starting this dialogue. Um, I have like spot tiny houses in, uh, certain areas like Park Heights of my district. There's a tiny house right at the corner of Park Heights and I can't think of the side street, but it's been there for a long time. And there's also one that kind of sits back on Risers Town Road as soon as you pass. It sits on Cold Spring as soon as you pass Risers Town. But there seems to be little spots of tiny houses throughout. I'm sure we all can, um, find them in our district. But it is time to really have the conversation. I think it, it's an added piece to help with our homeless, um, population. I had an opportunity to, uh, visit the tiny house community in Austin, Texas, which, um, have, they have several communities of tiny houses. Um, a lot of federal money is, uh, they've won a lot of federal grants to develop. And of course, their climate, so really strong tiny house communities that really help the homeless population there. And, and, uh, they actually build a community that, you know, they have buildings where, uh, the people can go to, um, have social activities and so on. And, um, some people, especially if they're homeless, you know, a lot of people forget when you're homeless, you really forget how to, uh, be a part of a family, how to be a part of your, you know, the family that you grew up in, how to just, um, mingle and celebrate special occasions. You're like reintroducing, uh, the person back into, uh, the workings of society. So they seem to have it, the whole process together. And it's an excellent example. If you ever get to Austin, Texas, it's, um, a nice thing to put on your list to actually do a visit there. Any other comments from committee members before we check for public testimony? I know there's a presentation first from two individuals. And, uh, you introduce yourselves and is there a PowerPoint that goes with this? Okay, so we'll start with that.
Good afternoon. My name is Randy Williams. I'm the founder of Metallic Luxury. Um, do I work this way? Okay, great. Metallic Luxury was actually created to initiate the chain of generational wealth through climate resilient construction and foreclosure prevention education for homeowners, which are through homeownership for low to moderate income home buyers. As you can see, the aggregated numbers from G B C says that we need, that Baltimore City actually needs seventy thousand houses. So although we say we need, although we have sixteen thousand vacancies, uh, we have the, a great amount of space to actually introduce modular as a part of our construction on a daily basis. Um, based on the numbers, Baltimore, Towson, and Columbia have the highest rate of foreclosure in the nation. That is as of twenty-twenty-three. So for every about, what, four hundred and thirty-one homes, there is one foreclosure that is located right here, right in our backyard. So this is very important because modular construction allows us to, uh, create a more efficient work environment for all production, whether installations of wire, plumbing, electrical, et cetera. Um, the climate resilient home features include water conservation or just uses of solar panels, um, which we have beautiful advisors that can provide education on that as well, but also the foreclosure prevention point. We sell our homes at about two hundred thousand dollars. So that way we can build for the home buyer and not exactly the market. We want them to be able to determine what their financial brevity is. And we're going to move on to what the, how this is important, how this aligns with Metallic Luxury being able to produce in Baltimore City. We would like the, the, the process of zoning and land use to be streamlined. So currently, we have to, we abide by all, all zones in all districts, but we need a little bit more feasibility. So for the code map, is it, we were suggesting, is it possible to introduce another type of color that allows us to choose different zones in Baltimore City that have been, uh, maybe pre-approved or pre-allowed for modular construction, especially those that are heavily in need, whether it's South Baltimore, West Baltimore. I'm very familiar with the Park Heights neighborhood as far as like volunteering or just, you know, planting, farming, um, all those things. So if there is a way we can come up with pre-approved zones, that would also help us allow us to introduce, uh, low-income and moderate affordable housing. My next, um, portion would be, right now, we submit all of our plans to the Department of Labor and then to the Department of Planning. Once they're approved by the Maryland Department of Labor, they then have to trickle down to Baltimore City. We would want to suggest that Baltimore City and the Maryland Department of Labor are able to review this together so that once they're approved, we can go ahead and start building. Um, I'm not sure if you all are familiar, but our localized immediate manufacturing partner is Blueprint Robotics as located in Dundalk, Maryland. Um, we also have another partner, but that one is manufacturing partner, but that is located in China. But we have one in our backyard that is able and ready to produce housing, ready for Baltimore City. Um, as for the third suggestion, we would want to simplify the fire code simply because although we see it, we utilize all the building codes known to MECOM. We just want to make sure that there's an automated checklist so that for any builder that we work with, they're familiar, they're educated, and they're on top of what needs to be implemented for their buildings. As for the fourth, we would want to improve site preparation. So we don't need to go through the traditional site preparation that a traditional builder will go through. But we do want to make sure that we can possibly include, uh, private inspections in addition to synchronizing, um, how our homes are able to arrive to their exact locations when they're shipped from the facility. They could be coming flatbed or through, you know, the national highways like North Avenue, which still has neighborhoods, but we want to make sure we're abiding by, um, the, the community's rules as well as legislative rules. And as for the permitting process, we, of course, after the Department of Labor approves the permits, we still have to them through this, this e-permit site. We're suggesting that you can create another measure of just educational videos in addition to like real-time statuses for us to know when, when and where they're approved. But also that can go in tandem with the above suggestion of being able to review them with the Department of Labor to reduce time and enhance our production. In addition, I would just always suggest that we do a pilot program because of course, uh, as you can see, these are two of the top builders here that we're working with, uh, myself and Brendan. Um, but we're really focused on bringing affordable or low-income housing to Baltimore City. And we would love to work with the city, um, to get that going. Thank you.
Thank you. And there was another speaker, okay?
May I have a point of, uh?
Yes, Councilwoman Porter.
So colleagues, um, this is just an opportunity for us to really see the possibilities. Councilwoman Ramos, I know that you've done a lot, um, in the space of affordable housing. Um, having the conversation related to tiny and modular homes just provides us with, um, opportunity of what can be done from a legislative perspective, from a programming perspective. Most of the recommendations that will be shared in these presentations will be coming up in the next term. So this provides us with an opportunity to ask these questions now to the experts and also Jason, who's an expert. So thank you.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to, to present to you all today. Uh, so I see some friendly faces, uh, here on the council and I'm looking forward to meet some more. Um, Randy did an excellent job. I wish we had talked to her a little bit more about what she was presenting off because she's had some great points that, you know, honestly, I'm going to be echoing and or reinforcing in subtle ways. My name is Brendan McCluskey and I am the president and founder of Trident Builders. We are a Baltimore-based general contractor. Um, I'm a graduate of the Goldman Sachs program. I am a leadership and energy and environmental design accredited professional. I'm a certified passive house builder. I'm also a project management professional. Um, our company is split about fifty percent federal, uh, fifty percent, um, I'm sorry, uh, fifty percent federal, uh, fifty percent private commercial work. Uh, mostly the work that we do is, uh, higher-end and technical, um, either high-end finishes or things that have very, uh, demanding energy performance requirements. Um, but we've also been very much committed to the city. Uh, we, we enjoy supporting, you know, the great people that are doing the good and hard work. Uh, we built out the Fede Street Outreach Center, East Baltimore Historical Library, Cherry Hill Eagles, Head Cap, and Banner Neighborhoods. In fact, we're actually getting started on something over there now. So my job here today is just going to educate you, uh, the, the council on various methods of modular construction. The first one is manufactured. And manufactured for all intents and purposes is trailers. Let's clear the air. I'm not talking about building trailer parks in Baltimore City, right? The, it's the other three that I really want to focus on. Um, volumetric is when a factory attempts to build a, um, a building a hundred percent within the factory. So it's the entire box. So it does the structure, it does all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, but it also does your finishes, so your drywall, your flooring, even the cabinets will get installed in a box. That box will get put onto the back of a flatbed truck and be basically hoisted in a place by a crane. Um, sometimes they make multiple boxes so they get, uh, joined together. So think of Christmas morning, right, when you're doing some assembly of toys, right? When like you're just for packaging purposes, they, these things can kind of come together. Um, it's, it's somewhat like that. The, uh, there, there can be very high quality done with volumetric construction. Um, the next one is panelized. Panelized is, uh, is not a hundred percent done. So like basically what the, the panelized is exactly what it sounds like. The floors, the walls all, all kind of come together. So rather than it being like a toy that you could pre-assemble, think of it like Legos. Um, the, I, I'd say the biggest differential between the two of them is that the volumetric market is focused on a turnkey soup-to-nuts sort of solution for construction, for, for pre-profap construction, whereas panelized is looking to achieve the greatest degree of efficiencies and productivity in the factory. Um, basically modular construction has been with us a long time. Oh, I'm sorry, and hybrids is basically a combination of the two, which is, uh, a system that I kind of like and Blueprint Robotics is, is embracing. So you, so you have some rooms that are, uh, intensive in terms of cost, right? You have all your, think of like a mechanical closet or your bathroom, right? That's where all your plumbing and your heating devices are. You do that volumetrically, that becomes like a pod and gets just slipped into place, whereas the rest of the building can then be built like Legos. Um, the, the panelized version and the, it, it has advantages because it has greater degree of customization amongst the developers. So an affordable housing developer can, you know, put in linoleum or Formica countertops and a for-sale high-end market could put in quartz countertops and wood floors, you know? But, um, they, you still have that sort of flexibility. Um, modular has s- some great potential, uh, advantages over the time. First, it can be done incredibly fast if executed properly. As I'm doing utility work and the foundations, right? The fa- the factory is building the, the housing unit. The minute my concrete is dry, those panels can start showing up and we can erect very, very quickly. Uh, the other thing is, uh, is better quality control. And that's becoming increasingly important as a consequence of energy efficiency. Energy efficiency, uh, targets within the construction industry is really dependent upon the building envelope. Okay, my industry is facing somewhat of a silent crisis. We have a worker shortage. We have a declining, I guess, um, pool of strong supervision and talents. We're also being a lot of pressure on affordability as we've been discussing here today. Um, in order for us to find efficiencies, we need to figure out ways to do things quicker, faster, and cheaper. And modular construction offers an awful lot of opportunity there. It's not only the real estate developers and the contractors that are going to stand to benefit from, from modular construction. The banks will like this as it'll ease their underwriting ability, okay? And it'll be a more predictable pro- uh, process. Modular construction has immense opportunities to reduce the, the risk of change orders, okay? Unforeseen conditions and delays in the field as a consequence of weather or procurement issues. Um, the city, as Randy was suggesting, should also embrace modular construction and be able to pre-approve some designs and ease the burden on their permit review process. I mean, you would like to think that if a house has already been reviewed for code performance, you don't need to review it every time you do the house again, right? What you need to do is like check for civil site planning and setback requirements for that, for various zoning purposes, which should be very, very quick to do. And then, and then the permit gets issued. Uh, lastly, the factory will a- also benefit a great deal as a consequence of us embracing, not just because we're a customer, but we're doing volume. Modular construction is still very much, uh, at the mercy of a very inefficient real estate development process, right? When a developer, an architect, or a general contractor like delays the project for somehow, it can create delays in the production of, on the factory floor. Factories don't like that. Factories want to be moving at a hundred percent production at all times. So by virtue of having a host of like high-volume, smaller units that could be used to, to empower smaller urban infill developers, okay? That we could really start to nurture a great industry here. Um, the challenge is, is that you need to do this at scale. To do anything in a factory run, you need to do a certain production, uh, uh, run size to justify the upfront engineering and, and tooling and setup costs, right? The other, um, uh, challenge to adoption is that my industry can be somewhat stubborn, right? There's a very, there's very much an attitude of, well, we've always done it this way. And, and, you know, as a result of my industry being very risk averse because of the margins are low, um, this can be somewhat difficult. We've done this. So we delivered, uh, six cottages at the Smithsonian Environmental Research Facility in Edgewater, Maryland. Um, they are fifteen hundred square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family houses, right? The reason why I'm giving you those metrics is that's pretty much describing the perfect starter home. And that housing stock is missing nationwide, right? This is, I've been all over the New York Times and NPR in recent weeks. Um, then there's a real opportunity. So it's not just Baltimore, like there's an opportunity here. Um, the houses that we produced for the Smithsonian use fifty percent of the power, I'm sorry, of the electricity of an average house in Maryland. But that's actually somewhat disingenuous because the, the average house in Maryland also has natural gas, right? So your heating loads for your water heater, your furnace, and your stove aren't brought into that calculation. So the houses we did for the Smithsonian just smoked with the average energy performance of an average house in Maryland. When we put solar panels on them, right? These houses were able to produce over two hundred percent of the power they use day or night, three sixty-five. So that was an aha moment for me that I will present here to you in a second because now you have a housing unit that can passively generate a, a, a revenue source for itself and offset deferred maintenance costs and, and, and make the housing more resilient for the residents inside them. So I look at the vacant problem, all right? Is it really an opportunity? Because like Randy was saying, the, our factory partner is, is a firm that basically imported their technologies from Germany, but they're located right here in Baltimore. Okay? We see an opportunity through, uh, at a pathway to nurture an emerging industry that we need to adopt as, as an industry, my construction industry, no matter what. We have an aging workforce. We have lower productivity rates. Everyone's clamoring for more affordable housing. We have, and we're all competing for workers that just don't exist. So we need to figure out ways of innovation. Okay, we've been, you know, exploring this in multiple different ways. We have a, you know, a pilot project that we have in, in design. And we've been getting, you know, we could immediately start to foster an industry here in the city of Baltimore that could immediately start exporting to other near-peer markets, okay? We could also start, um, looking at other markets. And, uh, I have been on the media talking about this before and I've had people as far as Cincinnati and Chicago reach out to me as a consequence. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I, um, I really like the idea of tiny houses. This is something I think the city has talked about, certainly as long as I've been here, over a decade. Um, and I think it's a real opportunity for us if we can find a way to simplify the process there. And I appreciated Randy, your presentation, um, explaining some of the sort of technicalities of getting these projects done. You want them to be as easy as possible. You want them to be as easy as possible and that slows it down. One of the questions I had as I was sort of looking at your presentation, sir, was Baltimore has a lot of character regarding its buildings. Our vacant homes are still actually beautifully built, wonderful architecture. I wonder if in thinking about this problem, this opportunity, does this tiny house concept or this modular building concept have some way to sort of adopt the sort of Baltimore row home opportunities? Could we potentially streamline some of the electrical plumbing and otherwise to fit our row home opportunity? You know, the question was brought up earlier about single-family homes and people still want the opportunity for single-family homes. We want people to be homeowners. This, I think, is an opportunity to get there. The question is, can we still find a way to keep some of the longstanding beauty of the city with this approach?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, you can. It's not an either or, it's a both. I think, we also think lots and that's one of the areas that we're focused on first because, you know, frankly, the building's already gone and so I can just put something new and I can focus on that. That being said, modular construction is going to become a bigger part of my industry one way or the other, particularly when it comes to homes. So our ability to support the factories that are here local, right, to nurture that, I think, is a huge opportunity for the city of Baltimore. You're right, there is a lot of character and there's a lot of beautiful homes. But there's also a lot of homes that are beyond their useful life. You know, some of these, there was no material sciences 100 years ago when all of these houses are. Like I've been in the, doing like conventional renovation and these things, we find horsehair and oyster shells in the mortar, things are falling apart. And more often than not, I go in there and not only am I finding lead, I'm finding asbestos, I'm finding structural issues. You know, there's a lot of things that these houses, there are houses that are salvageable 100%. And I think that by fostering a stronger modular industry here, we can figure out creative ways to incorporate some of those practices into conventional renovation. But then at the same time, like the industry is somewhat embryonic at this point and I think we need to kind of nurture it along to make it stronger so it can be a value add. I kid you not, like this city has a very, very proud industrial past, okay? And this city could become the Detroit of high-energy efficiency housing, which is what we need to build. I mean, the fact of the matter is climate change really kind of changes the paradigm on a lot of this conversation. Okay, a house has an expected lifetime of 50 to 100 years, right? If we're going to try to get to net zero in the next 15 to 20, every house that we build today should be as energy efficient as possible. And the fact is, is that a lot of these smaller urban developers are denied access to this because they don't have the aggregate power or the buying power or the capital for the factory to work with them. Now, I do have a plan in place, I've been talking to the councilwoman about that. I've got a 55-page white paper that is in draft and I've got peer reviewed right now that I will be publishing. But, you know, this is a phenomenal opportunity for the city of Baltimore that we really need to embrace.
Yeah, I'm really interested in those efforts and specifically things that we can do to keep the sort of character of Baltimore. I think it makes us unique, I think it makes us attractive. A lot of cities don't have 100-plus-year-old buildings. I live in a 100-plus-year-old house and I love the character of it. They don't build homes like that anymore. That said, one of the questions I have is how, what is the longevity? How long do the buildings last? Do we have some sense of the sort of staying power of these buildings?
Yeah, I would say that a passive-built manufactured home should last 100 years, easily, if not more.
100 years?
Yeah, I mean, like just like you'd see in the suburban stock in any of the, in any of the counties. You know, maybe longer. I mean, it's like anything else, it's about the deferred maintenance and how people take care of the house.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
One second, may I add to that?
Yes.
In addition to what he's stating, the use of steel also allows the improvement or the long-standing of the house, longevity of the home. So with steel, you're preventing rodent transfer proof, you're also preventing fires from transferring through the house should they happen. We specifically specify on modular container and timber homes, given that we work with our partners here as well as the one in China. So with the different materials that are incorporated in the house, you should have a home that should withstand any storm up to 125 miles per hour with these particular climate resilient inclusions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos and then Councilwoman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Porter, for bringing this to us and for thinking this through. Thank you both for being here. I'm all about yes and and all. Let's do it. Because we do have this opportunity to attract people. We know people want to move in the city and we do not have the inventory for them. And this would allow us to utilize all of the, we, there are 20,000 vacant lots, the city owns half of them. And some are spoken for, some are not. And it really provides us with an opportunity for really looking at our communities holistically about what we want to do to create intentional mixed-income communities. So two things. One is I, one of the, I didn't notice in your presentations, either of you, about the availability of land. Again, the city only owns 1,000, less than 1,000 of the vacant properties and only half of the vacant lots. You need land to do this. And we'll have a hearing next week on the land bank as another tool to help us with making sure that we have more land for this type of development. So can you talk a little bit about that challenge? I'm imagining it's a challenge, I didn't see it here, maybe I missed it.
Yeah, so it's a great question and it's a great observation as well. But there's also a dichotomy and like a little bit of a challenge with this, right? One of the things that Sean Kloski at Rebuild Metro kind of educated me on was the challenge of absorption. So one of the fundamental problems and like, we talk about economies of scale, right? Like we want to do 50 to 100 units. The problem is, that's not going to work. Like in some of these communities, you just don't necessarily have the demand to be able to drop 50 units at a time, okay, and have them be absorbed. It can actually create like a retroactive and even negative effect in terms of the economics. It might depress house prices more than help them. That's why we're focused on a small urban developer. Because the fact is that a lot of the small, like, you know, the Owls and like the Randys of the world, right? Because they represent the community, right? And they have the community's best interest at heart. They're also able to do smaller scale infill type of jobs. So there might not be, you know, 50 units, but it might be five, 10, 15, 20, right? Those communities could absorb at those sort of rates, okay? And we can do kind of a scattered site sort of approach. So, you know, one developer might be focused like on affordable housing, another one might be focused on four-market cases. You know, modular construction is flexible enough to entertain and support either one of those sort of uses. But you're right, you know, there is a land, but it's also a scalability issue too. There's a lot of inefficiencies everywhere from the permitting process to the financial underwriting process. These are all things that we're going to have to be very deliberate to find efficiencies over time for us to embrace this and do this right. But the one, my one last zinger of a comment that I wanted to get out there that I missed during my first presentation, right, was that the state and the city are talking about investing billions of dollars, right, to address the vacant issue, right? That strategy should be strategic and we should try to do that in a manner that has the best economic return on investment as humanly possible. And I think by capturing an industry that can serve 80% of the population that lives east of the Mississippi, right, and be the manufacturing powerhouse for what's going to be, what the face of house construction is going to look like for the next 100 years, I think that's a really good opportunity.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, if you look at a map, our vacant land is little bit and some of it is big. So there's really an opportunity to be strategic, as you said. Because like, for instance, in my district, I have, you know, half a block that has, you know, these historic homes that are being rehabbed and half a block that is, you know, ready for you to come and do what you need to do, you know? And so I think it's a real opportunity here. But those lots that I just talked about are all privately owned. We have to foreclose on them so that they can be, you know, through the interim process so that they can be available for you. So, or whoever, I'm using you as an example, but this is what I'm saying. So the opportunity is definitely there. The second question that I had and then another one came up, the, did you mention the cost? I would imagine that the cost of construction either is equal to or lower than, and I believe in rehabbing our vacant properties and I want to make sure that we keep our history of our amazing houses, so I want, and we know that that's going to be expensive. But in terms of scaling up, my understanding is that module is less expensive, is that correct?
Yes, so we've been able to get our square footage price around 135 to 175 and that's usually just based on the finishes of the house, whether they go to the very high end or whether we actually can develop workforce housing. With our localized manufacturing partner, our model or strategy is actually to implement a 960-square-foot model that we can sell for 200,000 to any of our buyers. And that's for anyone that's transitioning into housing, whether it's a senior, in addition to, well, simply because we have home buyers that are disabled, may not be physically visible at all, including myself. I used to blackout randomly, so I usually tend to stick to one-level homes or look at those in safety parameters, et cetera. But we include that type of flexibility with our localized manufacturing partners because there are different types of buyers who don't want to spend well above even that 175 mark. So we really aim for 175 to 200,000, but we have the manufacturing partners to provide the materials. In addition to, like you stated before, I know Baltimore City doesn't own all of the land, but we can renovate the homes with the panelized construction. So there are multiple ways that the, a generation of buildings can be redone with modular effects just in phases. So it really depends on how we start each zip code. I also have a public health background, so my brain thinks in zip codes, but each neighborhood requires something different, right? So it depends on how you want to start it, which block we starting on, whether it's like, you got a group of legacy residents that need efficiencies and homes based, you know, built based on that look and that fit and historical outlook of it, or if we have vacant land and we have the chance to challenge something new and different. But we've been able to challenge 135 to 175 a square foot.
So my response is a little bit more nuanced though and it really depends. And like, this is really where I'm, we've done a lot of like sort of modeling and studying on it. It's all about economies of scale, right? If I'm building four houses, right, or I'm building 40, I can, you know, the superintendent and the supervision and my cost carry get spread out over a lot more units and I can start pushing the cost down. You know, as we get into like later generations of the same design, I'm saving precipitously on my design costs, right? I've already drawn the thing, I've already designed it, I don't need to redraw the thing, right? I already know what it is I'm building. So I can tell you that it's going to, for at least for me right now, to do this hyper-energy efficient, you know, modular panelized construction, right, is more expensive than a conventional build. And this is like, the executives at Harkins and Southway will tell you the exact same thing, right? I've had these conversations with them, by the way, okay? They always, they see that, like, it always comes back down to parity, okay, and like their business model of how they're constructing things. It always becomes a rift and that's where like the challenge of adoption kind of occurs. What we're seeing though is that over time, if we were to embrace this, okay, we get over that hump, okay, we start increasing our industrial capacity, we see a couple of things happening. We see our soft costs going down, okay, we see our direct general conditions costs, like my supervision on it going down, right? So, because I can have one guy building 20 of these things in three different sites rather than only doing four in one location, so it's scaling. But I also see an ability to push on the inflationary pressures that we're seeing in the construction industry in general. Meaning that while conventional construction will still be increasing 4% to 6% year over year, right, we're going to be finding efficiencies through the trades and through the factories that I might be able to hold my number while everything else is rising. That's, that's the trend that we expect to see.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said, I think we, we need to be strategic about creating mixed-income, intentional mixed-income communities in our city. And your option is part of that mix and we just need to be strategic about it. I do have one other question, but I'll yield for the next round. Thank you.
Councilman Stokes.
To my colleagues, I think the 12th district is like five years ahead of you on this. The 500 block at East 21st Street have modular housing. There were probably a number of lots that have been vacant for 40 years. Taz and Tamra, one is the developer, the other is the architect. And what happened was, once they built those modular houses, I actually went to Pennsylvania where they built them inside a warehouse across the street from the, the properties that were kind of vacant and wasn't taken care of. When they first built the first one, a lot of other developers told them, you're crazy. Why are you going to build that on 21st and Greenmount? The first one they built, the next six went just like that, sold all of them. So I think the mix of the older houses we're talking about, our brick row houses and the modular houses, if you go and look at that area, it's a nice mix. But I think we need to look at that more, not at market rate, but homeownership. And I can say when former Housing Commissioner Braverman was there, so housing is familiar with this. This is about five or six years ago when it was, we broke ground, so I'm glad to see this happening in Baltimore City and other communities and, you know, housing supports you on what y'all are doing also. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. This question is for housing and community development. Can you speak to the status of the inter-agency permit working group and how you all have integrated these types of non-traditional models within that working group?
Yep. Jason Hessler, Baltimore City Department of Housing, Deputy Commissioner for Permits Litigation. So we do have an inter-agency working group. That group mainly right now is focused on the implementation of the new permitting system that's being worked on, so that is a strong focus. In relation to tiny homes, modular homes, manufactured homes, you know, they are permitted in the city, you know, as we put in our report, let me correct that phrasing, they are allowed in the city.
Yes.
As long as people get permits for them.
Yes. And, and I think I should rephrase my question. I want to really focus on the efficiency portion of my question. So we know that the permits are exist, but one of the major issues that we're experiencing, Councilman Stokes just brought up a five-year, a project that was five years ago in Oliver. And I want to make sure that we're including that efficiency in our conversations within that working group. So I'm sorry, I should have refrased my question to you.
Sure. And actually, so a lot of the work that is going on in relation to the upgrading of the permitting system is to create efficiencies in the system, to make it easier for the applicants. Part of our upgrade will be replacing the current version of project docs, which is used to upload plans with the city. So we'll be going to the most up-to-date version at this point. And then we have a, we have established a timeline to continue upgrading with project docs. And that program, which is separate from the permitting system, they work together. So there are a lot of efficiencies in there. We've met with the fire department because in the past, with discussions around tiny homes, a lot of the concerns were in making sure that those homes could meet fire standards. Since those discussions, we did adopt the different appendixes that are talked about in our letter that allow for tiny homes and for modular homes, which the city did not have before 2020. You know, the 2015 version of the code did not have those. So we're, we are very open to this. We, we see this, you know, happening throughout the city and the possibilities exist and I'd be happy to meet with anyone, including the two individuals that are here, to go over, I made notes on their challenges that they brought up, but I think some of it may just be a knowledge base, like zoning shouldn't be an issue.
Sure.
For any of these types of houses. Zoning doesn't prohibit these types of houses in residential districts. It's just a matter of setbacks and those types of things. So we can definitely work with them.
Thank you. Do we have a timeline on when the recommendations for that, that inter-agency permit working group will be presented to the council?
No.
Okay.
That's something coming out of the CIO's office and Tyler's not here, so.
Okay, no worries. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a formal committee request?
Yes.
If possible.
Yes.
I'd like to know the date at which those recommendations will be presented back to the council. Hopefully it'll be by the end of the term. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Ramos, any more questions?
Yes, ma'am. Did you, he's at the door, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. One is, I have a resolution on the permit office reforms and we did have a hearing about it a couple of years ago. And I'll ask the committee for scheduling that again so that we can get the outcomes of what the permit office is. So, you know, thank you for, for that. And we'll, we'll get that scheduled if we can, Madam Chair. And then my understanding is that the whole thing is supposed to be launched in January. That was the last update that we had had, but it would be good to have a report of where we are. So, thank you, Councilwoman. My other question? My other question was, on the presentation, the first presentation that we had, it talks about having to go to the Department of Labor. Can you talk about why you need to go to the Department of Labor in the state to be able to do this? Ms. Williams?
Yes. So all construction documents actually have to be submitted to the state first in regards to the modular process. Once they are approved there, then we can bring them to Baltimore City.
I'm sorry, say that again. So, because I know that in order to create an organization and to do all that, you have to go to ESTAT, which is the Assessment and Taxation. I'm just not sure why the Department of Labor is involved.
That's just the standardized process of how we have to submit the modular plans. But also, this is to say that most modular manufacturing facilities have to submit their information to say they are an actual accepted or approved, acknowledged. They have the actual federal and state documents to produce in that location. If the manufacturing facility does not have those, that documentation, the state of Maryland would not approve it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, I see what you're saying. So it's a standard for manufactured businesses?
Yes.
That has to be done? Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't realize.
You're welcome.
So thank you for that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
So just a reminder, this was an informational hearing, so the committee doesn't have to vote on this. And if I think anyone else has any burning questions, the presenters will stay back a little bit to answer your questions. But at this, oh, let me, oh, so we do have some people that want to testify on this. So let's get through that, and it sounds like someone, oh, go ahead. That's okay. That's okay.
Oh, I pushed the wrong.
All good and for me.
I pushed the wrong one. So again, good afternoon. My name is Nika Namdi. I'm the Executive Director of the SOS Fund and the Founder and Chief Operating Officer of Fight Light, BMO. And we do support, in those roles, we do support this resolution. We support the notion of having options for modular and manufactured homes. In the anatomy of Baltimore's blight, which is a paper that we wrote about how community wants to see blight remediated, and communities had their soul restored in community, one of the things that came up was accessory dwelling units. And it is connected especially to this, to this topic. The challenge is, I think, that accessory dwelling units are not allowed under the law currently. And so one of the things is, as this goes forward, we definitely would want the council to bring forward legislation to allow accessory dwelling units. Because the reality of, the reality of it is families look different, people's pockets are different today. And in order to go forward with a city that is building for environmental concerns and climate resilience, we need to have all the possible tools. And so if we're going to use, if we're going to be using modular or manufactured homes in general, if they are allowed in general, we certainly should be allowing them for accessory dwelling units. Because frankly, I do not want my adult sons living in the house with me. But if I could put them in their own apartment in the backyard, I would love to do that. And if I could do that in a way that would be energy efficient, climate resilient, but also economical, I would like to be able to do that. So as this conversation goes forward, we definitely want the council to consider bringing some legislation that will allow ADUs by right for properties to have an appropriate yard size. Thank you.
So you said you did a, your organization did a paper?
Yes.
Do you, you have a problem submitting or emailing that?
Sure, I can send you, I can send you a copy.
All that information would be pretty helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Randy? Oh, you already, okay. Shaia? Pronounce your first name for me so I can remember it. Because I know you're... Okay. Ms. Seltzer.
Shail Seltzer, Liberty Square. There is no information what modular, what tiny house, no definitions, nothing, no papers here. So, tiny houses, we're a city full of tiny houses, 600 square feet, 800 square feet. The Empower Habitat for Humanity to allow more people to work on their own houses and be able to achieve housing that way beyond the purchase. I have to say, there was no sight of where Baltimore, Columbia, Charleston, foreclosures, anybody can make up any numbers. Old technology, it's the wool over your eyes. There's a reason why these people aren't in California, because they have, they have laws. We haven't updated any green for materials or building laws or anything for 10 years. You can go look it up, nearly 10 years. And the thing is, okay, so what we can do is we can work on, people can convert their garages to small homes. That's what we can do. But the thing is, tiny homes are, you watch the shows, they, people move, they have some kind of job, they're not, you're not going to get any income taxes from these people. Just like that lady said about wanting to put them on their property, you're going to, I'm going to have two split up houses next to me. They would love to put trailers on the lawns. You have to take the whole thing when you're talking about tiny houses. We have tiny houses and we can fix them up. And the thing is, nobody said anything about what kind of gas and et cetera, et cetera you're going to use. And it's called cross laminated lumber. That is what is used throughout the world. It is more fire resistant, it takes less time to build with. There's so many benefits. And again, that's what I'm going to say, it's four, up to four levels, because the wind has to move. You have to have wind move through the city to cool it.
Okay.
So I suggest, I suggest that you have another hearing with having people who actually have all these different modalities of what a tiny house is. I'd like you to invite Habitat for Humanity so that they can explain to you what they do, because they seem to have been, be absent for, as much as I've been advocating, I've given you many times my plan, which includes the Habitat for Humanity, and there's nothing more than fulfillment than people being able to work on their own homes.
Thank you for your information.
So, they're here to make money. They're here to get in before we have the laws and the climate crisis and the sponge city. They're trying to get in here. And metal roofs, yes. Metal buildings, no. They look like shacks.
Thank you for your testimony. And just a reminder, this was a, this was a first informational hearing, just to bring the issue to light and just to make a correction that, yes, we, and I was a part of Transform Baltimore, and that was a five-year process, and we are continually transforming that manual as we move forward. And again, this is a beginning step that the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Porter, took it upon herself to get the conversation started. And we appreciate you getting that started. So, yes, there are many ways to do tiny houses, and again, this is the beginning of the conversation. Did you have some final statement?
Yes, ma'am. May I take this opportunity in my closing remarks to correct the record?
Yes.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So as the representative on the Sustainability Commission, I can affirm you that over the past 10 years, we have produced kind of a greener manual that has come out of the Department of Planning, particularly related to climate, related to zero waste, and also sustainability efforts of what the city can do in many industries such as housing, health, waste in general. So I just wanted to, if you need reference to that plan, I'm able to send it to you so that you have that, that knowledge of what the city is kind of doing to move to a greener, greener, efficient economy and city in general. With regards to Habitat for Humanity, I definitely thank you for your highlight of Habitat for Humanity, given that they are a partner within the city of Baltimore. And my district alone, they've, they've performed about 80 homes within the Curtis Bay community with South Baltimore Community Land Trust. So they are an active partner in this discussion as it relates to the housing crisis and our housing feasibility within the city of Baltimore. So I thank you for that. But I just want to caveat that they, you know, tiny, tiny and modular homes are an aspect to the conversation. Several of my colleagues have mentioned, you know, they've mentioned the housing crisis within many of their testimonies here today and just within their communities. And we know that it's going to take a piecemeal effort in order to kind of really increase our housing stock. Tiny and modular homes are just one aspect of it. Habitat for Humanity and what they do is one aspect of the, of the puzzle as well. So everyone, we are partners and we are working together. The last point I want to mention about converting garages into tiny homes, and Jason, I'm going to need your assistance on that. I don't believe that that is true, based on square footage, based on the classification of a garage and how it's classified with tiny homes. So I just wanted to correct the record. As we talk about this conversation, I want to make sure that we are using accurate data, we're using facts, but also that we're having an opportunity and an openness to have the discussion to keep things moving. So, thank you.
Just to add to that, there are best practices around the state, around the country, that I'm sure that we all are going to look at and compare and as we move forward. And we'll have one last comment from Housing.
I just wanted to make one point of clarification. Jason Hessler, Department of Housing. When I talked about tiny homes and modular homes being legal in Baltimore City, which is correct, I was not referring to mobile tiny homes. So we were talking about tiny homes, modular homes that are on foundations, that are hooked up to city utilities, to electric power or solar power, and not, you know, anything that you would see on tiny nation where they drive them from city to city or state to state. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification. And Eric Tiso from Planning?
Yeah, sorry, don't mean to drag this out, but since we mentioned ADUs or accessory dwelling units, for those that may not know the alphabet soup, that's another thing that is on our things to look at. The state of Maryland just recently concluded a task force talking about that, and predominantly it's the other more rural jurisdictions within the state that is the target audience for that. We're probably the most progressive on that. But accessory dwelling units are basically another form of unit that could be in, on, behind, or on the same property. And that's one case where the zoning code will need to have some form of amendment to accommodate that. And there's a couple of different ways to do it. It's going to be a policy discussion, so stay tuned in the next council session. Thank you, ma'am.